Hey.
Okay. So, we've got.
There's a new copy of that proposal that you just got that doesn't have those things in it. The the exceptions, doesn't have that list of exceptions in it. They revised it.
Yeah, there's two proposals that are being circulated.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It is six thirty. If everybody's joining, a standing of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Dryer, if you would call the roll.
Absolutely.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Sins?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Ferguson?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Rucker?
Here.
If there are no amendments or corrections to tonight's council meeting agenda, the agenda stands as presented. And is there a motion to approve the council meeting minutes from August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three?
Motion to approve council meeting minutes?
Second.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Sins.
We have one visitor this evening. This evening, Mr. Eric Medici, if you would like to come forward.
I have a comment. Basically, well, start, very, I was never notified you were going to discuss the COA so properly across the street from us. I was never notified, so basically, everything that happened regarding that last council meeting is basically nullified. There's nothing in the, there's nothing in your ordinance that says an an appeal doesn't require the same notification. So, that being said, I have more of a general question, and I know I've sent you an email regarding that and my concerns with that. But this is more of a generic question. If you, as counsel, were applying for a loan, and you felt that you didn't understand all the ins and outs of that, you would get an expert to come and fill you in. You guys voted on that without anybody here to tell you what the guidelines say. You went in without any representation. You went down flying blind with your pants down. That's how I view it. You know, there's no reason in the world why when you have something coming up about the design review board, you shouldn't ask the current chairperson to come and just say, "Give us the, you know, ten thousand foot view of this. Are we on the right path?" You give us the, you give us the details of what the ordinance requires and what the guidelines require, because that is the ordinance. And then, once we have that, we, as council, will make a decision. But what I saw happening last week, of course, I wasn't here, but what you see is you're flying with no information. I mean, unless everyone in this room has read that hundred ninety pages of guidelines, you made a decision without any information. And this affects people. This affects my property values. It affects my business. It affects everybody in your village. It affects the long-term viability of your historic district. You have someone basically on retainer, and all you had to do was say, "Hey, we're going to be discussing something here. Can you come down and give us the heads up?" So, I guess, I just wanted to say that. I'm a little bit concerned that council went in that flying blind. You guys need somebody who understands this stuff. You can't rely on your applicant. You can't rely on, "Hey, this feels good," or "This looks good." You really, really need an expert to do that. And you have somebody who is really well-educated. He does a great job. He shouldn't have been here at that meeting. You should have had him talk before you voted. That's mine.
Thank you, Mr. Medici. Moving on to our dessert portion into reports. The last week, I attended the Explore the Derby event at McKittrick Park and with Columbus Metro Parks representative and our Parks and Rec staff. It was a great event. Always great to check the health of the creek, and we are in excellent health based on the species specimens that we found that morning. So, it was really neat to see all of that through the youth and adults that were there present to participate in that event. So, stuck around at the end and really counted up, and our Columbus Metro Parks representative did the, "If you have certain amount of specimens found, you are in this health and this and this." But we rated excellent on that morning. So, that was great, and thanks to our department for creating that event for the community. Also met with our Parks Department and Daughters of the American Revolution, talking about in preparation for this Wednesday, want to invite everyone out to Past Time Park. At August thirtieth at six P M., it'll be the Ewing Historical Marker rededication. Again, want to thank Mr. Barry Thomas for bringing this matter to the village and to Jerome Township. The foundation for the marker was deteriorating out on seven thirty-six and forty-two, and so with the efforts of the two municipalities came together to get it a more permanent location in Past Time Park. So, we are rededicating the marker Wednesday, August thirtieth at six P M. So, would love to have everybody come out and attend that. Tomorrow, attending a meeting with Congressman Mike Carey along with Ms. Lupton downtown. He's having an open house for his district. So, that's what I have been working on the last couple of weeks since our last meeting. With that, I will pass it along to our finance director, Ms. Onit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief McKee?
Yes. I'd like to thank the Plain City Nutrition for their donation to the Plain, uh, the Police Department's K nine program. After K nine Anador passed away, they had made a special drink, and all the proceeds from that drink went toward the K nine program. So, I'd like to thank them for that. We applied for the Ohio Law Enforcement Body Armor Program grant through the Ohio Attorney General's Office and was awarded approximately fifty-three hundred dollars to assist with the purchase of body armor bulletproof vests for all police officers, and would like to thank Sergeant Howard for all of his work on that grant. And then, lastly, Officer Judy attended detective with new investigator training at the Plain Columbus Police Department. That's all I have at this time, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief McKee. Ms. Lupton, our village administrator?
Thank you. We wrapped up the paving program last week. A few streets around town, including the entrance into McKittrick Drive, were paved. It all looks really nice. The Nobed Road construction continues. Hydrant flushing is this week, so you may experience some groundwater and just call us if you do, or if you see the crew still out there, just keep patient and give it a little bit. The Uptown Park unit bid opening was last week. We received some favorable bids. We have the first reading to award that, and we're excited to get that construction started soon.
Thank you, Ms. Lupton. Council president, Mr. Sins?
Thank you. We have our planning meeting this week for the work session this Thursday, and our next meeting is coming up next week. And coffee with council and friends continues with the farmer's market. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Sins. Our law director, Mr. Lafayette?
No report.
Communications and marketing advisory committee, Mr. Sins?
No updates on that.
B Z A?
Nothing.
Planning and zoning, we met on the sixteenth and approved items that you'll see later on in the agenda. Our next meeting will be September twentieth here at six thirty P M. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mayor. First, the easy one. There's three more concerts at Music in the Park on Sunday at seven. Well, we're going to start doing six thirty now because it gets dark earlier. The performers and the audience is greatly enjoying the new concrete floor in the cattle barn. If you haven't seen it, and it's continuing for you, just take a look at it. It's amazing. And hopefully, maybe we can do some more improvements to the cattle barn to make it at the end, an all-weather event venue that can be used for multipurpose things. It's a nice, really big space that's, that's really amenable to that. So, tonight, we have on the agenda the Parks Rules Document, and I endorse this Parks Rules Document. We've had extensive discussions on the committee about theirs. There was a couple of things in it that were new to me, but they're not objectionable. It is a little bit of a mixed policy document and rules document, but I'm okay with that, too, because most of them would devolve into rules when you apply the policy. So, that's okay. I hope you've taken a look at it, but whatever, I'd fully endorse it and hope that we get it passed. So, thank you, Mayor. That's, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Tree Commission, do you know they're still working to get the legislation?
I missed the Tree Commission meeting this month on the voidable, so, but I will, I normally go to those, even though it's not an assigned duty and I don't vote, but I do participate in the discussions there. And I'm really, really kind of surprised by the quality of membership of the Tree Commission. They are all professionals, and a lot of them are professional in the area of trees and landscape and the stuff that you would want them to be expert in. And, and they're taking it very seriously and having long meetings about, you know, what's good for the village, what isn't good for the village. So, that's, you know, a minute report with not much content.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. We'll, we'll continue to look forward to that legislation. Personnel and finance, C I P?
Our next meeting is September seventh at seven P M. And if there's no conflict in here, if there's a conflict in there.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Fire board?
We meet next Thursday at the fire station, six thirty. I had a special meeting this past week. I was unable to attend, but I believe, Mr. Sins?
Thank you.
attended at my stead.
Thank you, Mr. Rucker and Mr. Sins. Design Review Board, we will leave that one blank right now. Economic Development Committee?
Thank you, Mayor. We met on the twenty-second. Mr. Stanford recapped the combined Marketing, Economic Development Committee meeting that we had for the members who were not able to attend. And also, we began discussing the latest version of the economic development strategy. So, council will be seeing that sometime late September or first part of October.
Thanks. Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. We do not have a public hearing this evening. Next, we have a motion to set the public hearing for the amendment of the codified ordinances, Chapter eleven oh five, definitions of Part eleven of the Planning and Zoning Code, Z C dash twenty-three dash one for October ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Is our motion to set the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
And is there a motion to set the public hearing for the amendment of the codified ordinances, addition of Chapter eleven eighty-one, plan unit development, and the removal of Chapters eleven seventy-seven, eleven seventy-eight, eleven seventy-nine, and eleven eighty of Part eleven of the Planning and Zoning Code, Z C dash twenty-three dash two for October ninth, two thousand twenty-three?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
And is there a motion to set the public hearing for the rezoning of zero U S dash forty-two parcel number zero four dash zero zero eight one five, P Z dash twenty-three dash six from Community Business District B two to Plan Unit Development, P U D, for October ninth, two thousand twenty-three?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
And is there a motion to set the public hearing for the rezoning of zero U S dash forty-two parcel number zero four dash zero zero five oh three dot zero zero two, P Z dash twenty-three dash seven from Restricted Industrial I one to Community Business District B two for October ninth, two thousand twenty-three? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Just, uh, may I reiterate?
Yes.
I did look, and we just confirmed that is Columbus Day, and the offices are open here, so we will have a meeting on Columbus Day. Just so if anyone looks at that and sees it.
Because we changed Columbus Day, like, swapped it for, yes. Thank you, Mr. Terry. Moving into discussion items, Ordinance eighteen dash twenty-three, note legislation explanation?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify. I spoke to the last council meeting, so I wanted to have Renee explain Ordinance eighteen twenty-three just briefly.
It was discussed about the worth of the right amount. It is the right amount. We are refinancing one billion dollars. Last year, we gave one point two five. So, this year, we are paying down two hundred fifty thousand dollars of principal, and so we are refinancing just one billion dollars. So, that's why, yeah, the ten million is we're giving the money back for this real plant that we borrowed last year.
This is kind of like musical chairs with this money, right? It's, we're giving some back and getting some new to replace it or some?
Yes, replace it, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Moving into the moratorium on the processing and issuing certificates of appropriateness?
Yes, we just wanted to have a discussion item before any ordinances are read tonight. There have been a couple of suggested changes prior to the meeting, so open to discussion, however.
Just to, well, I guess I'll jump into it just to clarify the changes. So, the initial, we had our discussion last meeting, and basically, what I advise is we can't make a change to our ordinance. We can place a moratorium on the entire ordinance or one or more provisions of that ordinance subject to legislative changes, but we can't make a legislative change without following a legislative process and public hearings, et cetera. When I got the draft, it looked like there was an attempt to retain some, like, I think fast-track approval was one of the things that we're considering of accepting, leaving outside of the moratorium. But then, there were some other items that were in the initial draft, and so I misunderstood what those, those other provisions, because it said something to the effect of, you know, these other provisions will, you know, be administratively approved, and we can't do that because that would be a change in the ordinance. So, I sent back what I sent, what the original draft that you see in your materials was kind of saying, "Okay, I guess this is what you guys want," but I had it still going through the D R B procedure for those limited items. In talking tonight, it sounds like we had miscommunications over all that. And so, basically, what I did is I, tonight, I put together two separate legislate, pieces of legislation for you. One is a moratorium subject to the fast-track approval process under thirteen twenty-seven ten dot one. And then, the other one is just a complete moratorium on Chapter thirteen twenty-seven altogether. So, I think that streamlines it a little bit.
So, there is no third option. What your face says, there's no third option, which is basically putting everything under deck. You can't, you can't do that, like, because the structural things that aren't in the fast-track process in the ordinance today can't just be moved under deck. They have to go through this.
Something that is not legally allowed to be administratively approved today cannot be made by virtue of some of this ordinance we're doing.
So, under the full, I guess, under the full moratorium, this doesn't really matter, but under the limited exception moratorium, the fast-track process, during this time, do the appeals still come to council?
Yes.
So, basically, what, if I can put this, summarize this a little bit, so the entire goal here is to give us time to get the code, the membership, educate the board, all, everything ready, and then we basically pause until we feel comfortable that everything's going well again, and then we enact whatever the new ordinance is, or it'll be some sort of updated after this moratorium, and then we go forward. Is that, basically?
Basically, it's hitting the pause button while the new legislation's drafted and after council considers and discusses what they want the new ordinance to look like. If at all. I mean, again, you guys are free not to do it at all, too.
My biggest concern is, you know, putting a moratorium on this is how is it going to affect, you know, any economic development?
Yeah, so I was hoping for a third option, where we, like, moved everything under deck a little bit, and if that's not possible, I get it.
I understand, I understand your point, why, why it can't happen that way. I just, it seems almost like a...
You know, Mr. Rucker, I, I, this is a question, I, along with the other questions, it always comes up in my head. You know, what is this? And nobody wants to cause discomfort to or problems for developers or people maintaining their property. However, the only out I see for people in that situation is let them bring their issue to council and, and request a waiver in their council, and we could do that by ordinance for a specific case as an emergency, as an exception created by urgent needs or emergencies or whatever. Could we not do something like that?
Theoretically, we...
But if that's the case, just leave the process.
No, this would be...
We're not fixing anything, then, that everything's going to become at the council.
No, no, I'm presuming that not everyone can...
If you make it so that any, any certificate of appropriateness that is not fast-tracked has to come to council for approval, that means every certificate of appropriateness is going to come to council for approval. Whereas, right now, if there's a certificate of appropriateness that someone disagrees with, they can appeal it, and we will have those certificates. So, so, yes, we will see more, we will see all the certificates of appropriateness, and it will lock down the council proceedings.
I get your point, and I agree with you. Okay, not a problem. There's always something wrong with every proposal that, when you try to fix something by changing it in a kind of a sporadic way, like we're doing with this. So, the option still lies out there for, whether we respect it or not, for somebody to come to council with a request, and that request could be a request of waiver. We can't prevent them from asking, okay? If we're going to honor it, fine. If we're not, don't, okay? That's, that's, that's all I'm suggesting. There is an out available in the last resort. But if we don't want to use it, that's fine. I don't care about that. But we have to get this, I think we have to get this moratorium in place to get control of, of what we perceive as irregularities in the process. And so, I'm going to support this moratorium without hesitation.
Are you supporting?
Thank you for your comments. Really, those are...
Mr. Reed, just to clarify, there's two options on the table. Are you supporting the with limited exceptions or without? Are you happy with both, and you favorite one?
I'm supporting the, the, the original version that was corrected without the section two exception, which is this one, okay?
So, exceptions.
So, so this is the one, this pretty much the, the original one, just with the exceptions taken out of it. It honors the fast-track provision, and that's, I'm fine with that. I think we should do that because it's an administrative process.
So, with limited exceptions, I'm on the side of with limited exceptions?
Yep. Well, right, the one, I know they're not...
I think to Mr. Rucker's point, like, when I, when I read the findings of fact and the minutes for the last appeal, like, in that same meeting, there was someone that did something for a sign. They did it the right way. It got like a six oh vote, yes. And I really have a hard time putting a moratorium on those people that are like, like, in that same appeal, like, when I was reading the minutes, there was someone that was just like, in that meeting as well.
They could come to council and, and...
Like, they were just fine. So, so, so I, I like the idea of limited exceptions because that, and I don't even, I don't even remember. I think it was the stain and whatever building, and no one had an issue with that. So, if we put a full moratorium, something that we have no issue with, not, that is not causing a problem, will also get stopped. So, the limited exceptions allow that. I will say, and I, I don't, I think that there are things on the limit exceptions because of what we put in the fast-track process that maybe I would like to have a moratorium on, but I can't, I can't pick and choose, right? And that's my problem. So, like, there are things in there that have been appealed that are in the fast-track process that ideally, I would also put a moratorium on. So, I don't, I, I don't know what's the best answer. Either we, I think the limited exception is the right answer because then the unintended consequence, we still have the protection of the staff, and we don't unduly punish people that are just doing their thing and trying to advance the economic development of downtown. So, I think I agree with you, Mr. Reed, that that is the range I go, is that limited. I think I put the...
So, you're okay with the fast-track and agree that we can't have any other exceptions?
Yeah, because I can't pick and choose fast-track.
It wouldn't be legal to do that.
One clarification, that awning would not be subject to fast tracks because it was a brand-new awning, so it would still be a moratorium.
On the, on the exact one I'm talking about?
For that example, yes.
Yeah. If it was heard, if it was heard by design review board, it's not a fast-track item.
Oh, great point, good point.
The only signs would be windows signs, would be, be fast-track.
It's tough. I still think that we have to pause, like, I don't know, what else I'm, I think, I think giving our house in order is a good idea.
Oh, absolutely.
And if that means that some people have to wait to put a new sign up, do we, six months is a long time. Do we limit it to three months? Could you get, like, could you get it done in three?
Mr. Terry, I think it's not going to take six months or three months because this code is, is kind of really easy to fix. It just needs to be tweaked a little bit. That's...
My understanding from previous discussions was that six months was put out there as kind of being the outside to be conservative, to give, make sure the staff had sufficient time, but it could be done sooner.
We could fast-track this.
It's got to go through the review process. Then it's got to go through the hearing process.
Thirty, thirty-two.
It's got to go through the tail process, so you do the math.
Yeah, get six months.
We're looking at sixty days minimum, just from procedural steps.
Right, because it has to, because this would be, you have to go through planning and zoning?
No.
No, it can just do here. At least that's a little quicker.
Okay.
I, I...
I was thinking it would have to go through planning.
At least we cut a month off. Yeah, I, I, I'm, I, I am supportive of the limited exceptions with Mr., I think we have to get the house in order. I know that's not popular for some people, but we can't continue down a process that we feel as if it's broken, like, we, we have to pause, like, we have to. I, I don't see any other way. What do you think, Mr. Sins, Mr. Ferguson?
I mean, I would agree. I mean, that's just echoing what we all talked about at the last meeting, so...
I know, Mr. Rucker, you were here, but basically, we were just kind of saying, I don't know if you watched, but basically, this is another appeal, another, this is a conversation, we're just like, we got to do something, was basically the answer.
But you understand that if, if we do, if we pass this, we will be hearing every single certificate of appropriateness request until this goes out of effect.
Why would there not just be a moratorium and they just don't exist? I would think things wouldn't exist.
Okay, so, so either, okay, either, either development of buildings in the Uptown area will cease
For six months.
For the, the period of this moratorium, or we will hear every single request.
No, the request won't come to us.
Because the, the, the ordinance is still in place.
Apply for waivers through...
The ordinance is still in place, which requires them to go to the zoning manager and then to D R B. We're just putting a moratorium on D R B.
So, they wouldn't have any recourse for that, for the time of the moratorium?
Let me clarify, just so, so the legislation as it's drafted, two, moratorium means nothing.
Right.
Anything that's other than what's already in the pipeline has already been applied. Those are protected, but any, any new ones are done.
So, this would absolutely just kill any development for the...
It's going to kill any applications. I'm not going to say development, but it'll kill all the applications. They can't be submitted.
If you can't develop, if you can't get an app, if you can't get a certificate, you're not going to develop it. Mr. Medici, would you develop it if you could get, if you couldn't get a certificate? Would you, okay?
Yeah, Mr. Hutchinson would be, by, if we adopted a complete moratorium, Mr. Hutchinson would not be allowed to accept any new applications. Under the limited exception, he could accept applications, but only if they fall under those little, limited items in the fast-track that get administratively approved. What Mr. Reed was saying before, and I think he got a little confused, he was suggesting that we make an ordinance change that, that we adopt other legislation to, which would necessarily have to be a legislative change to allow council to hear those during the moratorium, and I'd have to draft something completely different now, and I'd have to get rid of the appeal process as it exists.
I withdraw the motion.
We can't hear our own, can't hear our own appeal.
And I think that we know exactly, like, what our next steps are when we talk about the commission itself and kind of like what going forward, what will make it more streamlined and...
So, I think we, I think you're right. I think we have a path forward. We have applications in process. We have a first reading... We have a first reading, and then two weeks from now, if we don't waive a second reading or anything. What I would like us to do, and this isn't just that, this is probably everyone here, is like, talk to the business owners downtown, and be like, what do you guys think about this, like, I'm sure that they have something, we're going into winter months eventually here, like, they're, this might not be as much of a stop as we think, and we kind of open up and say, is there anything that you're looking to do in soon and see what the impact will be on them? We don't have to, like, waive a second reading, get this through the night, we have two weeks. Because I think we're gonna hear some people be like, I think you guys should pause, I think we're actually gonna have some support of, you know what, you guys, get yourself in order before you do anything else. Some people might say, hey, I need to, I wanna get this signed up, and if we explain to them why, I think we just take these two weeks to, like, talk to the uptown business owners, because they're the ones that are gonna be affected, and say, how effective can you be, if we get it done in six months, are you guys gonna be okay? And we'll come with a streamlined, better process that will be better for you anyways, we'll have edu, we'll have a cleaner code, a more educated body, all those things, a cleaner appeal process, like, I don't know if the pushback is harder than we think, like, they might, I've heard a lot of people, business owners uptown, we just heard from one, they'd be like, get yourself in order, like, I don't know if we'll have that much pushback of positive, as opposed to just keep it going the way we're going.
And Mr. here, Mr. Hutchinson's gonna have about forty applications in the next two weeks, one or the other. That's my.
Well, that's, it's part of it, right, I guess that'll keep us busy for six months, well, at least the limit. I've, I've said, I think we have to, so I, I can be done with the discussion.
Okay, I, I s, I got one question with two elements to it. One is, I, and theoretically, we could do this all tonight, get it passed, and, 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 and declare an emergency, which I think it is, to avoid the flood of applications that might come in trying to slip under the wire, uh, and use the existing process. You know, I'm sure that's not playable to most people, I would do it, but what the heck? So the other option is to, is to take it up at work session, which is next week, which gives time for, for consideration to council members, it's a respectable amount of time, do a first reading tonight, and, and pass it next Wednesday, which I think, I think there's a sense, I have a sense of urgency in getting this done to, to prevent things getting from DR, to DRB until we fix the DRB code, okay? So that's just comments, you know, we can do it however you, however you would like.
What is everybody's thoughts on that?
I think we owe it to the business owners to talk to them, if we do it, if we now, if we do an work session, I find them, but I think we owe it to them, I, I think we'd have to have a conversation.
I would be good with work session.
Work session, okay.
I don't want a fast-track.
I don't want that. Fast-track the fast-track.
Okay. Everybody feel com- comfortable on this?
Are we doing a first reading tonight?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, then.
And the second reading on.
Is that already on the agenda?
Yeah, it's already on the.
It's already on the agenda.
If you didn't decide, it's one of the.
We can get it added.
Then I'll read that.
Yeah. We're getting it added to the, um, work session agenda.
Yeah.
So.
I was looking at.
So.
Mr. Lupton.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
When, when I read it, it'll be an ordinance establishing a moratorium on the processing and issuance of any certificates of appropriateness for the uptown Plain City Historic District with limited exception.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes, it's the limited exception provision.
I will put that one off to the side. Um, our next topic of discussion, transfer agreement.
Thank you, Mayor, um, can I have this, the first reading to approve and execute the transfer agreement between the Village of Plain City and the Mid-Ohio Water and Sewer District? The transfer agreement is the culmination of months of, um, negotiation for me, uh, regional political subdivision with Matson County. Um, we formed the district, I believe, in January, um, so now this is the official transfer of assets, so Mid-Ohio can really get started on the operation and management of our water and sewer. Um, we believe the reg- regionalization would be good for the residents, good for the growth of the community, it's good for the Darby Creek. Um, and we look forward to working with Matson County. Um, it's stated in the memo, uh, there, um, it's a pretty comprehensive document, there are a couple minor tiny changes from a, a version I sent out a couple weeks ago, we still are working on compiling all the money balances, since they change pretty much every day, we wanna get that as close to the second reading as possible, but I will distribute that in its final form, hopefully later this week. Um, the second reading, if it goes forward, also in September, we'll have a, a package that will be required, we'll have to amend our codified ordinance to repeal uh, mentions of water and sewer and thieves and all of that, to make sure that there's no confusion, um, be- between, uh, residents, developers, anybody from the village side. We'll also have to have some budget amendments where we do transfer the assets. We don't have any personnel leaving, so that's exciting, we are retaining our staff, uh, the Mid-Ohio is getting ready to staff up and take over the operations. I just wanted to give a heads up, this is the first reading, second reading will be in September, um, we can have another discussion if needed.
Now, Mayor, I, I just have, I, and this is, I'm not gonna make a, a big deal out of this, it just is a, is a, it just strikes me as not the way things should be done, to have something other than transfer agreement-specific items in the transfer agreement. There's, there's one or possibly two things in the agreement that have nothing to do with transfer of, of assets, property, money, or anything else. Uh, my objection to it is, number one, there's state law that says you can only have one subject matter per ordinance, and, and in effect, we have two subject matters, and only identified one in the title, and, and, um, the other thing is, if, and I, I, I told Ms. Lupton this, and, and I'm, I'm gonna go along with council's decision, but if you put this in a document database and you do a document search on a title, which is the way things are usually done, you will not find the content that's in this document that has to do with policy. So that was, and those are, those are my points, I think, if I were doing it, I would separate them, but if council doesn't want to fool around with that, then probably I'll vote for it anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you.
Our next item is pastime park campground rules policy.
Yes, again, first reading tonight, so we just wanted to make sure we had a full discussion if needed, um, this is just an update to some of our campground and park rules based on feedback from police department, uh, the parks department, uh, solicitor, um, I don't know, Ms. Granger's here, do you wanna give a highlight or something to change it?
Um, yeah, basically, the, the campground, the rules and policies have not been updated, I believe, since I began, so eight years ago. Um, so in light of just trying to basically give, I think, a little bit, uh, deeper teeth to our policies, um, and particularly confron with, um, with Chief McKee and, and law enforcement, just trying to make sure that everything is very clear as far as our ability to, if need be, eject uh, from the campground, um, and delineate just, I guess, more crisp delineated, uh, rules and policies, there's no question, uh, we try to eliminate any gray areas for, for those using our campground, so, um, we feel that after, you know, confron with, uh, Chief McKee and police department, legal counsel, we've looked at other campground laws extensively, we feel that this is probably the, the best set of, of rules and policies that we could pull together, and, uh, we think it's pretty comprehensive, there's a lot of information there, but we think that this is gonna be very beneficial to operations, so. Anybody have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Anybody have anything? Okay. Moving into unfinished business, second reading ordinance sixteen dash twenty-three, increasing the compensation of the position of mayor of the Village of Plain City, Ohio, and repealing all prior conflicting ordinances and resolutions.
Motion to approve second reading ordinance sixteen twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
Second reading ordinance seventeen dash twenty-three, increasing the compensation of members of the legislative authority of the Village of Plain City, Ohio, and repealing all prior conflicting ordinances and resolutions.
Motion to approve second reading ordinance seventeen twenty twenty-three.
Okay, let me ask this question.
One second, give me a second, real quick.
Oh, yeah, because, okay, if we repeal all the other ordinances, because this ordinance only affects, uh, existing, uh, people who come in new to council on January first, the existing ordinances presumably appeal with, uh, deal with people who are not in that class three, council members, so what, what's the deal here with that, can we, we can have them both on the books.
Or does he does that?
But one's gonna be, they're both gonna be effective, whether we repeal it or not.
So what he's saying is, if we repeal the previous pay scale.
Yeah.
That, uh, Mr. Reed, uh, Mr. Ferguson, and I will fall under.
You won't get paid, you won't get paid. I thought you wanted that, no, um, basically.
I, I, I motion for it, to get rid of my payroll.
It, basically, the language of it is repealing all conflicting ordinances.
Sorry.
So to the extent that those other ones conflict, those are repealed.
So that's.
The other ones remain on the book.
Second. Okay, good, thank you, again.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker. No.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Second reading ordinance eighteen dash twenty-three, providing for the issuance and sale of unvoted general obligation notes in a maximum aggregate principal amount of one million dollars, and anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the costs of various municipal public improvement projects and declaring an emergency. So we need to waive the second.
Well, where do you, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, second reading, you're right, thank you.
Where do you want us to read?
Okay.
Motion for approve ordinance eighteen twenty twenty-three and declare an emergency.
Second.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
Thank you. Second reading, resolution twenty-six dash twenty-three, authorizing and implementing a procedure and policy for the community grant program and sponsorships.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-six dash twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
Second reading, resolution twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-three, authorizing and implementing the general fund balance policy.
Motion to approve second reading, resolution twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
Moving into new business, first reading ordinance nineteen dash twenty twenty-three, approving a twenty twenty-three supplemental budget update. First reading ordinance twenty dash twenty twenty-three, authorizing the village administrator to award the contract to, for the East Bigelow Avenue Parking Lot Project to Byrne and Jones Construction. First reading ordinance twenty-one dash twenty twenty-three, establishing, oh, establishing a moratorium on the pro- processing and issuance of any certificates of appropriateness for the uptown Plain City Historic District with limited exception. First reading ordinance twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three, authorizing the approval and execution of the transfer agreement between the Village of Plain City and the Mid-Ohio Water and Sewer District. First reading resolution twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-three, authorizing and implementing the pastime park campground rules policy. And we have a notice to legislative authority, Ohio Division of Liquor Control Notice of Permit Application for three sixteen North Chillicothe Street, um, for Monarch Pizza LLC. Again, we don't have to take any reaction unless council feels we need to. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Needing adjourn.
What is that?
Record is new.
We have our email discussion.
Sure.
And it's only important.